It is four o'clock and the city council is in order. We're beginning with a information discussion on the development services improvement.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilman.
What's your name?
This is an update to the continuous improvement efforts that are continually ongoing at Development Services. As you recall, we're taking a three-pronged approach in our continuous improvement efforts where we're addressing the people, the process, and the code itself. To begin with people, the one position that we're looking at changing, as I've talked to you all before about, is the Planner One position. We're no longer going to have the Chief Planning Official or Officer, we will now have a Planner One. We've conducted three interviews and we're looking to conduct some more interviews here in the next couple of weeks. We took a one-week break because we wanted to publicize this position at the actual planning conference that Drew attended last week. So we're hoping to get some individuals that apply for the position itself. So as, as, just a reminder, what we're trying to do with this position is free up more time upfront with this position itself. So we're going to take a lot of the administrative work the front staff has for planning and move it into the Planner One position, which gives the front staff more ability to address customers as they come in for permits or other additional questions, and also help them with the MGO, MyGovernmentOnline. And of course, they'll still be doing some planning activities and they will also now be responsible for running the meetings, planning and zoning, ZBA, BBNA, and so forth, and, and have that front staff dedicated more to the front staff area. Excuse me. We've had great success with MyGovernmentOnline. We've had, for all intents and purposes, the permitting side of deployment of MyGovernmentOnline is complete. There's some minor little issues we're reporting, but the, the structure of what we're using is working now. We haven't had really ma- any major concerns or complaints come in about the system itself. Matter of fact, the last few meetings that we've had with citizens and even in the CRC, there was some good comments about the use of MyGovernmentOnline. The next module, the module we're working on right now is the Code Enforcement Module. And so Donna has been meeting with MyGovernmentOnline. She met last week with them to do kind of a training slash practice run so that they, she could get familiar with the system. And in that, while she was doing that, there were some errors that were found, and so they're working through that. And because of those errors, we weren't actually able to do our soft deployment, which we were hoping to start on Monday. And so what that soft deployment looks like is really, we're going to go out and take the cases that we received from November 1st, start putting them into MyGovernmentOnline, and then any cases that come in so that we can test the system, make sure it does what it's supposed to be doing. And so we're hoping, if everything gets fixed by tomorrow, we'll actually start that process of implementing the, or updating MyGovernmentOnline to test, test the system. If everything goes well, we're looking to actually do a full launch on the week of December, the first week of December. And so that means opening it up to the public so that they now can submit their complaints or issues that they've identified while they're traveling the city, or identify various issues. The way we want to propose this full launch is that we're going to have, and I've already talked to Martin, is create a how-to video. And in this video, it'll be on our website so that people can link on it, click on it, it'll be less than probably about a minute. This shows them the step-by-step process of how to submit a complaint. And I also have a couple of slides, not a couple of slides, but I have a slide with a couple of pictures that I'll talk to more a little bit here in a few minutes. The next module is the Health Module. Now that one's taking a little bit longer than we expected to because of the fact that in previous years, we've never really had a system. It's always been a manual process. In other words, manual forms, manual information, but real node database. And so now, we're actually having to translate into a database. So that's kind of the issue that's been happening there. But for the most part, it's been pretty seamless, pretty smooth. Just a lot, a lot of hours been spent to communicate to MGO what we do and the forms that we utilize, and also going through some of those forms to get rid of some of the obsolete stuff that we had. So we're looking at right now doing a soft lunch, launch of that module in mid-December, possibly the second week of December, just depends on some milestones to get accomplished. And then a full deployment either at the end of December or the first couple of weeks of January, that's our target goals. For the planning module, we're going to have our first meeting in December. This is where we're going to establish the requirements. So part of MGO is you've got to establish your requirements, in other words, a step-by-step process of what you need to do. And so we'll go through that process, we'll give them all our forms, all the detail that's involved. MGO will then go out and digitize all that information for us. And then we'll be able to do a soft launch, and we're hoping it'll be about the second week of January so that the last week of January to the first week of February, we're able to do a full launch for our planning module of MGO. Now, the good thing about the planning module of MGO is that, one of the issues that we've been facing is that when we're doing the permitting side, sometimes we don't know what's happening on the planning side. And so sometimes there's miscommunication. Well, the great thing about the two modules is that having the two modules allows the system to communicate, and so you can see what you're doing on either side. So that's a good little, a good piece that I like, and I'm excited about using the MGO system.
That means that, right now, that's not there.
That's not there at all right now.
Alright.
It's just the verbal communication when they do ask.
Do you see that as still being a weakness right now?
I, I do, I still see that as being a weakness because if Drew's out, like last week, he was out at a conference. And so if we needed him, we would have to send him a text message or try to call him. And then when he got, when he was able to pull out of the meeting, or whatever session he was at, he'd give us a call and then we'd go through that process. And Dorothy has some of it, but it's in paper file, but there's a lot of information that needs to be addressed.
So then when you get that Planner One, that'll also fill that gap as well, on a personnel level?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is what MGO looks like. And so when you look at this process, the website itself, you can actually already go on it and select where it says Solution Center, and then I believe it says Submit An Issue. That allows you to actually submit the code compliance issues that people may have. Now, that's the website. Once you click on the Submit An Issue, it actually takes you to this other dialogue box or other webpage. Our website will have the address for that particular page, and our mobile app will have the link to this particular page as well. So that way, there's no jumping through extra steps, it's just, I click on it, here's my page, I go ahead and insert all the information, all the data that I need to. And the great thing about the software, it allows you to submit anonymously as well. So let's talk about, a little bit about demolition of substandard buildings. Now, I will have to say that this is a process that we've been researching a lot and talking about internally a lot. So we haven't had a chance to really sit down with Mike to talk about it, so this is a very rough draft. And so there's probably some changes that might come along the way. But I think we've tried to capture all the things that are addressed through the recommendations of TML, and also addressing the Dallas versus Stewart case that basically changed the way we municipalities address the demolition of, of properties. And so from that, we've identified three potential processes to utilize. One is the administrative process, which is outlined in Chapter 214, which allows us to communicate a notification, bring the hearing in front of a board or some sort, and so we're still utilizing the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals. And then there's a 30-day appeal window. Now, within that 30-day appeal window, you can get into the third phase or the third process step, which is the court process. Now, when a customer or property owner says, hey, I want to appeal this, they go, the appeal is to District Court. Because the Supreme Court said that ideally, the, the non, I'm sorry, ideally elected officials should be the ones making the final determination as to what should happen with a particular property, because then you get into the whole taking clause of the Constitution. So with that, that's where you would end up. However, we also have the volunteer process. So we give a notification to a customer, they say, hey, you know what? I agree that this needs to come, come down, this property needs to come down, or this house needs to come down. They, we have a volunteer waiver, and so then that allows us to access the property and demolish the property, whether it's a contractor or themselves, or us directly, to go in there and, and address that particular property. Then of course, the court process, and this also means that we don't have to do the administrative or the volunteer, we can go directly to the court, or the customer can go directly to the court as well.
We have many volunteer owners?
Well, we really haven't been utilizing the demolition process for some years, as I understand it. But I think this will get us in that general direction. Again, this is rough draft, so from here until we, we meet with Mike and sit down and talk about it, it, it'll probably change again.
I'm glad, yeah, I'm glad to see this starting, starting to take shape, because I had no idea how, how this, how this process worked.
It's, it's a pretty intense process. So then just to give you an example of what that process looks like, so on day one, you may have a complaint or identification of a substandard building. And then anywhere from two to three days after that initial complaint or, or identification, we're going to coordinate with the Chief Building Official, we're going to communicate with the Fire Marshal, because the most important thing of their assessment is a report that states all of the structural deficiencies. Because that is going to be critical, especially if it goes to the District Court. From there, we issue a notice, and there's a 10-day notification period that has to, waiting period that has to occur. From that, we would hear at, at the Building Board or BBNA, and then they would make a determination of what's the best course to go forward from there. And then anywhere within those 30 days, you would have a sec, the, the property owner would have to secure, repair, or demolish the property itself unless they said, hey, you know what? I want to go to the appeal process. Then you go into District Court, and the whole process starts anew at that point in time. But let's say, after the 30 days, everything, everything got to that point. It can take anywhere from 10 to 15 days to muster up the resources to actually go in and possibly demolish that property. It just depends on if we're, again, outsourcing it, or doing it internally, or working with some other entity to, to help us there. Anywhere from six, in total, you're looking at anywhere from 60 days to two to three months. And 60 days is working days, and then if it goes into District Court, you're talking three months, six months, or a lot longer, just depending on the caseload for that particular District Court, so.
Can I ask a question to Mike? So if it does go to District Court, do you, as city attorney, are, are you involved in those cases? Or is that something that we utilize, you know, legal counsel from elsewhere to, to be involved in those cases?
Well, Guillermo's right, that I haven't looked at this with them. And so, and this is the first time I've seen this outlined, so.
I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
No, it, what I would envision doing is figuring out kind of what kind of environment we have, and then if we need outside counsel, we use outside counsel.
Okay.
We've never done this since I've been here, we've always gotten volunteer, voluntary compliance, so, yeah, but, but.
Which is the hope, right?
Right, 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 for sure. There's, you know, there's, one, one thing that's kind of left out here too is, sometimes we need search warrants. And so that might take a week to go get that, to go get an appropriate judge, because we don't like to use municipal court judges for that. So, but yeah, we just have to work through this process.
Yeah.
Yeah, like I said, this is, this is.
Right, no, this.
A huge draft.
Right, right.
Well, I, I think it's also important to note, as both of you all have kind of intimated, is that this is a, going through that court process is really kind of a last resort.
Right.
In that we've worked with people as long as we can, now some of these substandard buildings that we have, they've been tagged for years and years and years and years, and people just have not done anything with them. But this would at least give us some tools to move things along, and in the end, hopefully get that voluntary compliance.
Correct, okay.
And also through the Neighborhood Enhancement Team Program, we're seeking more of the voluntary demolitions through more innovative methods.
Absolutely. Who would pay for that?
Well, we have money budgeted to do some, and then it ends up being a lien on the property. Or there could be other ways of doing that with city resources, meaning, meaning our equipment. There's all sorts of ways that you might, might approach that.
Good.
Logistical question, because having been through it, not so much with residential, but it says, you know, once the process starts and it's all agreed upon, that the city has 10 to 15 days to demolish the property. Do you not have to do asbestos abatement surveys and?
Well, and, and that's part of the process, we haven't clearly gone through and determined. So those are things that we're trying, trying to work through. Right now, we're just outlining the, what, the overall process, and then the detail is going to come much later. Because those are, I'm sure those are things that we'll have to address.
Those timeline days could be adjusted once all of, all of the.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's just.
Right, there's a lot of.
A tentative outline of what we think is potentially could happen.
Every case is going to be different, and to your, and to your, to your question, yes, we'll, we'll have to address that.
So something like this, maybe I would look more at the steps rather than the, the timeline for right now, as far as the structure of what you're presenting.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And the reality of what I hear Mike saying is that in the last recent memory, we've never done this.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
As far as I understand it as well.
Okay.
As far as taking someone to court, now I can tell you this past year.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you down.
You might need another.
I can tell you, this past year, we did have two voluntary demos. We had one shed that was collapsing, and the owner volunteered, removed it. And then we had a home, we, well, I think we had two homes that were burnt, and of course, they, they of course took down those. So we do have voluntary, we've never taken anyone to court, but we have done the voluntary.
Okay.
Okay.
The next thing we're talking about is the plating process. Now, this is something that we're going to really address through the subdivision ordinance, but we're trying to already adopt that internally. So the four phases that we've talked about in the CRC is the, these four phases that are up here in front of you now. And so the idea is that for every those, every one of those phases, you have the third, you, that's where you get the 30 days in, that we have to meet by law. And so it doesn't allow you to just say, hey, you know what, I want to, I want to start Phase Two. No, you have to fa, finish Phase One, then go to Phase Two, then Phase Three, all the way through. Now, we are going to have a waiver process, which allows developers, builders, whomever, to come in and say, you know what? I want a little bit more flexibility, I want a little bit more time. They can sign off that waiver, and then we can do several things concurrently as we get through the whole process itself. So that's what we're working on now. Drew's already adopted it internally as to what we're doing, even though it hasn't, isn't in, in ordinance yet, but we're already following this.
And that lines up with the Code Review Committee's process that was discussed at the last meeting.
And new state law, that's already effective, yes.
Junk vehicles, I presented this to y'all before, but I wanted to just come back and clean this up a little bit, talk a little bit about what we're doing, because we went back and assessed certain things, and we found that we were kind of almost duplicating ourselves, and so we cleaned up the process a little bit more. So we still have the administrative side that is going to be the notification, and then whether we have voluntary compliance or not. And then from there, instead of going through what we would call the traditional code enforcement piece, where we would do a second notification, and then on and on and on and on, and it kind of gets into this loop, we're actually just going to go from yes or no, no voluntary compliance, go into the next phase, which would be addresses to the court. Now, the ordinance has to be changed to address what we're doing, so I've already submitted those changes to, to Mike, but we haven't worked through all the detail on it yet, so, but that, that is in, in his office. The new program is the Neighborhood Enhancement Team. This is the net program, we're very excited about this program. Donna is going to be leading us in this particular program itself. And so her, the overall goal is to develop a partnership with our neighborhood so that we can address the issues that they've had in the past, and any other things that they may want to do. Of course, we have to assess that, but the idea is to empower them to help clean up their areas, or clean up their neighborhoods, improve their neighborhoods overall. We have a four-phase process to this. The first phase is the neighborhood assessment, and this is where we're going to work with our departments, we're going to work with community leaders or the neighborhood leaders, and work with them to assess the area, identify opportunities that need to be addressed. And then we get into, one of the pieces I almost forgot, in between the assessment and the enhancement event date, what we might find is, as the, the team assesses and identifies opportunities, Donna, of course, is going to identify all the resources that are needed. From those resources, volunteers, donations, whatever may come about. But sometimes you might find that, you know what? Let's say we find a sidewalk that needs to be repaired. Well, we can't do that on the same day we're doing the event, so we'll coordinate beforehand and get that addressed upfront, and then instead of waiting till the actual event date. But the event date itself is the day that we get all, all the departments that would be participating with us, as well as the community. And essentially, we'll be able to have like library there, we would have Public Works, the Police Department, the Fire Department, and maybe even Public Utili, or not Public, it's the utility building as there as well. And again, this is as needed, so it's not those specific departments, but as needed, we would have multiple departments show up and participate. And then, of course, the idea is to empower the neighborhood to really address a lot of the issues. So we would work in coordination with them. Then we would have the enhancement celebration. Now, the enhancement celebration is twofold, in the sense that the event will have at the end of the, at the end of the event, a celebration there as well, but then we'll have a celebration here in front of you as we recognize those couns, those neighborhood leaders and recognize the neighborhood for its efforts. And then lastly is the Neighborhood Sustainability, and that is where Donna continues to work with those community leaders to ensure that all our achievements are, are not reverting back to the old state. So it's trying to sustain the improvements themselves. And so this little flyer, as you can see, it says draft, is an outline of what we're trying to do. It's still being modified, but I want to kind of give you an idea of what it says and what we're trying to accomplish. We're trying to do two events per year, and so right now, we've targeted April of 2020 to do our first event. And this, of course, will be in the Doyle area. We're trying to scope down right now as to what area within the Doyle community. And then the next one will be sometime in the fall, we haven't decided yet on the, on the actual dates.
So how will you, how will the leaders be determined? Will they just volunteer and?
Well, and that's the piece where we're going to talk to like churches, the, the churches, the Doyle community at center itself, and then try to find some leaders within that area. So it's going to be a little bit of a mass communication to a lot of different people, and hopefully get them to volunteer.
Well, there's some good ones, I mean, there's some, I'm sure that we're going to be happy to help, so.
The other thing that we'll do is, well, and we've already started doing this for this first one, is identifying the property owners with the greatest number of parcels, so that they can be, you know, have direct involvement. And they, some of them haven't been involved in the past, and so we're going to try to reach out to them and get them involved.
Good. And then how are they, I'm sorry if this has already been discussed, but how are the specific neighborhoods selected? I, I, I mean, it makes sense to me that we've been completing the plan with the Doyle community. We know very well what, what their needs are, and will continue to assess what they want. But then beyond that, what, how is that, has that been decided yet?
Well, essentially, that's why Donna has been promoted to the Neighborhood Enhancement Manager slash Code Enforcement Officer, because she sees the cases that come out on a day-to-day basis, and so she'll be able to use her database to then go in and say, okay, I have a lot of cases in this particular area, then that is a flag there for us to go out and evaluate. And then from there, the whole process starts.
Okay.
Congratulations, Donna.
I, I would make this observation. I think this Neighborhood Enhancement Team is ideal for Donna to take on. I've always wondered, being as nice as she is, how she did code enforcement. But I heard her say one time, she always used the word "we."
Yes.
When she's dealing with dilapidated property or whatever else, and the folks are there. You know, what can we do here? What can we, you know, how can we make this better? So I think this, I think she'll do great.
We believe so too. So the next process improvements that we're going to work on for the month of November is the Contractor Registration Process, the PNZ Case Processing, and the ZBA Case Processing, and then the Hotel and Motel Inspection Process. Those are the things we're going to try to get done by the end of this month. And then there's a large list in December, but it can be a little deceptive because the commercial and residential processes are pretty much done already. The thing that we're missing, and they're done because of the improvements we've made with MyGovernmentOnline, but we haven't documented those processes, created the work instructions for them. So we just kind of have to circle back and complete that piece. And then, of course, the annexation, that's going to be a little bit of a more detailed analysis. The addressing process, for all intents and purposes, is done as well. But the thing we're waiting on is for that new planner to come on board, because that's going to be the responsibility of that planner. And so we wanted them to have a say into what that process is going to look like, so we delayed it to, to December. And then you have the boarding home, then you have the court case management process, and then you have the food inspection process. Now, that one, I'm pretty much going to move to January. And the reason I say that is because Doyle is actually going to be one of our Lean Six Sigma green belts, starting in January. And so I was thinking, this would be a perfect project for him to, to work on as, as we move forward. Speaking of Lean Six Sigma, so we're going to present to you a project that was completed by Donna using the Lean Six Sigma methodology. Now, the goal of Lean Six Sigma is the elimination of waste and variation in our processes. And we use a five phases, five-phase methodology to do that. We define the problem, and by defining the problem, we identify exactly what the issues are. Through the measure phase, we assess the capability of the process and identify all the potential root causes that can occur. And then the analyze phase is identifying the specific root cause or root causes to why we have issues, and then, of course, implement improvements to the particular process. And then lastly, implement controls. And the thing about implementing controls is we want to make sure that we implement procedures, work instructions, mistake-proofing ideas, whatever they may be, so that the process doesn't revert back to its original state. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Donna, and she's going to give you a brief update on her project.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm here to present my green belt presentation. I'm, I'm really excited about this. I can tell you, I was not on board at first, but after we got started with the whole project, I'm a believer in it. And I, I think once I show you my presentation, you'll, you'll understand why I feel that way. My project is reducing the hours spent per case, and then comparing other like cities. Now, I did compare three other cities. I compared Weatherford, they have three code enforcement officers, and those code enfo, code enforcement officers are spending 5.2 hours per case. Here, there's only one of me, and I was spending 4.6 hours per case. Bernie has one code enforcement officer, she's spending 3.8 hours per case. And then Fredericksburg has one code enforcement officer, and he's spending 2.5 hours per case. As a Lean Six Sigma practitioner, we are taught to look at the average and the standard deviation. The standard deviation allows us to spread out, to see the spread of the process. The standard deviation for this process was 1.3 hours. Our goal is to reduce, reduce the standard deviation to have a better, have better control of our process. As part of the Lean Six Sigma Project, one of our requirements is to create a project charter, which clarifies the problem that is before us. I think I'm going too fast.
There you go.
There we go. One of the tools that we utilize is a process map. This is a graphical representation of the process used before my improvements. And as you can see, I have a lot of steps from start to finish. This is just one case, this is not several cases, this is one case. My fishbone diagram helps us to identify the potential root causes that could have a negative impact on my process. The X tracker is a tool that we use to help, it helps us analyze the potential root causes. Unlike traditional problem-solving, Lean Six Sigma requires us to develop strategies on how to confirm which potential causes or cause is the actual root cause of, of our problem. Now, the next slides that I'll be showing you are some of the problems that we found in my process. One of the issues we found was duplicating. And here's an example of why I would have to duplicate. I would create a paper file, I would create a paper file, then I would create a shared file document, and then I would create a government, it's called GovQA file that's online. So that's three, the same thing. We evaluated the whole process, and we found that all the items highlighted in yellow represents a duplication in my process, and as you can tell, there's a lot of duplicating. This was really interesting to me because my spaghetti diagram further illustrates all of the duplicating in some of my movements. The movements that you see on that small diagram are in-office steps only. I'm doing about 369 steps, just going back from my desk to the copier, out in the field, back into the copier. To kind of give you an example of what my process is, I would create a paper file, I would start the file, I'll go out to the field, do my inspection, I would have to send all of my information, email it back to the office. Then when I get, when I would get back in the office, I'm having to print, scan, and save the photos that I sent back to the office. Then I would have to put those photos in a shared file, and then put the same photos in GovQA. Then I would have to make all of my notes in the file, and then go to GovQA and make the same notes. Lot of duplicating, lot of time. To confirm what Fredericksburg was doing, because I was really jealous when I saw his numbers were so low, and I wanted to know why his numbers were so low. He came over and visited with me, and he just kind of showed me his steps, his process, and then he showed me his work truck. Everything that he needs to be successful out in the field is right there in his truck. His, his truck is his office. He has a printer, his computer, everything that he needs is right there. I was really jealous.
Is, is Guillermo going to get you one of those?
I already have it, and you're going to see it in just a minute, yes. This process map illustrates the changes we made to make it more efficient. Overall, I was able to reduce my process by 20 steps. Overall, I was able to reduce my process by 20 steps. This is the picture I'm proud of. This slide, or these slides illustrate the before and after in my work truck. On the left, you see before I had all my equipment. On the right, I have an iPad holder, my printers in there. I have a little small desk that has all of my forms, notices, paper, whatever I need to be more productive is right there in my truck now. So I don't really need to come back in the office unless I absolutely have to. I can do everything, uh, I need to do right there in my, in my work truck, which is really nice. This graph illustrates the before and after of my project. In the, the fine phase, I was averaging about 35 cases per month. But once we improved the process in April, now this was just in April, you can see the number of cases, um, increased dramatically and it to, to the high of 119 cases just for that much, or that month. I did dip in August, um, there was vacation and some sick leave, so my, my numbers did drop slightly there. The next graph shows the improvement of hours worked per case. Originally, I was averaging 4.6 hours per case. Since the improvements, I'm now spending an hour, uh, an average of 1.9 hours per case. So that's a huge improvement. And I can tell you, in October of 2018, I had a total of cases, I, I think it was 442 cases that I did last year. This year, at the end of October 19, I had 747 cases. So that should tell you, just having the equipment in the truck has really improved what I'm able to do out in the field instead of coming back and forth and duplicating. As part of the, uh, my control, we cre- we created a procedure that outlines what we want the process to, to look like, uh, which allows other staff members to follow as a guide. That's it. Any questions?
Great presentation.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Um, I just had a question about.
Yes, ma'am.
So I guess there's times where you could actually be finishing a file on another case, and there's a phone call that comes in with a complaint that perhaps you could get a jump on, and without having to go in, you could go start the process of the new investigation, which I think is great. I remember writing with you, and I, I remember thinking, you were saying that even then. That, I think, was that, that was 2018, how you would have to go back into the office and.
I do have to go back and forth. Now, that's, that, the only, I guess, negative right now is my, my work phone is with me. So of course, yes, if they call, I can pull over and talk, or if they email a violation to me, then yes. But if they call the office and leave the violation on my voicemail, then of course, I can't do it to the next day. Now, I will tell you, when calls come in, I try very hard to do them the following day.
Right.
If not that day.
Great, that's exciting.
And then with calls or complaints coming in through M G O, she'll be able to address those while she's out in the field versus waiting to come back.
Right.
Because she'll have access to the system.
And Donna, what percentage of your cases are resolved voluntarily?
Oh, I was still, 99%.
So the caseload's almost doubled, and they're still 99% voluntary.
That's interesting. You know, I've, I've found that even, uh, people that are very committed to property rights, which we all are, um, have a concern about the dilapidated buildings and so forth, and, you know, because it is lowering the value of the neighbor's property, and then it gets into health and safety issues. And so I know this is touchy, but I've also found sentiment out there saying, to be a better city, w- we need to address this. Uh, o- one question I want to ask you. In walking the city as I've been doing, uh, one of the things I see is when you have a, a family that starts storing things on the front porch, and then they store in the front yard, and then the side yard, and the side yard, that, that doesn't seem to stop. But, you know, it may not be the building is endangered, but is there anything to do about that?
That's actually considered a public nuisance. So when you see those, you, you call me, and then I will address that. What will happen is I will go out, do an investigation. If there is a violation, I'll, I'll leave a notice. I normally give them seven days to comply. Then at that time, I'll do a re-inspect. If they still have the violation, I'll send them a certified letter, letting them, letting them know, this is your last chance. You, you need to comply, or a citation will be issued. Then at that point, when I do the second follow-up, if they still have not complied, then I will issue a citation and we'll go to court. I will tell you, nine times out of 10, they do comply. It's just having neighbors feel comfortable in calling me and telling me, my, my neighbor has an, an issue, can you check it out? But I don't want to, I want to be anonymous. That's okay, they can call me, they can be anonymous. They just have to reach out. Neighbors sometimes don't like to tattle. Now, I will tell you, I do have those neighbors that like to tattle. But for the most part, you have those that just will not say anything, just let them, let them be. So if you see those, please call me, I will address it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Um, so from a code update, uh, this is just, uh, an update of where we're at. So zoning code and sign code have been approved. Uh, the next C R C meeting, which is in January, we'll continue talking about subdivision code. And then pending approval, this will be presented as U N workshop in January, uh, with the building codes, the pool codes, the safety codes, and some of the other ones that go along with those building codes. Uh, so we'll have that ready for you to present and then, uh, have our first reading, uh, shortly after that. Uh, one of the things that came out of the Curbville 2050 was a dashboard for Development Services. So what you see here is actually printed out for you as well, to make it a little bit easier on the eyes, but this is the dashboard of what we've created for Development Services. And the idea is to talk about or identify all the, the, the big picture of Development Services. So I'll go through this real quickly. I'm not going to go through the numbers, but just kind of outline what is there. So this is for last fiscal year. Uh, you can see where our total revenue were, uh, where our total, total revenue was, uh, what our expenses were, and then you can see over time, uh, from a month-to-month perspective, what our revenues were and what our expenses were over that course of that month. The, the cool thing about this is we were able to create the speedometers that allows us to track where we're at. So if you look at this, we spent, in, in, in regards to revenue, we had a 110% uh, uh, percent over budget. Uh, when we got, came to the expenses, we were at 100%. Uh, when you look at the building side, you have a, a communication of the total number of permits that were issued, uh, the percentage of plan review within 10 days. Uh, you also have a, a valuation of commercial value. You'll have the number of residential square foot, and remember, we can't track, uh, residential, uh, costs now. Uh, so we're tracking the, 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 the square foot for, for residential homes. Uh, and then you can see the number of permits between commercial versus residential, and then you can see the total number of permits that have come in on a month-to-month basis, and then comparing that to the previous year. So you can see the, how, how we're performing from year to year. Uh, from a code enforcement standpoint, uh, the number of cases, so as Donna was mentioning earlier, 747 ca- 747 cases, and then the percentage of complied cases, you can see over 99%. You'll be able to see where the total number of reactive versus proactive cases, and then what the percentage of that breaks down into. And then you can see the cases on a month-to-month basis compared to the previous year as well. And then the planning, the same thing, the number of total plots. Uh, this one doesn't have any data yet, because we weren't necessarily tracking it in the past, but we will going forward, which is the percent of, a percentage of plots processed in 30 days, so the idea is we'll always be above 99%. Uh, planning, the number of zoning cases, and the number of Z B A cases, uh, and then the difference between the two. And then, uh, you can see the total cases, uh, as they come through on a month-to-month basis compared to the previous year. So there's still some changes that probably need to happen over time, but this is our first draft or first initial step in trying to create this dashboard, uh, that will be located on our website. It'd also be, uh, we're trying to update this on, uh, before the 15th of every month. So that way, we have it readily available to, to present to whoever needs it, but it will be located on our website, uh, here shortly.
I know we're running out of time, it, I, I don't under- the total cases versus the case for more than building permits, those, the, just looking at the lines themselves in the, like, April and June, like dips to zero, it looks like, in total ca- I don't understand that.
Oh, for planning, the planning piece, down at the bottom?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, sometimes what happens is you just don't get any cases to come in. Like, uh, last month, uh, we basically canceled one of our P N Z's case, uh, P N Z meetings, because we didn't have any cases to come. And, and sometimes it's just the timing that works out. So there's, there's a case, but it's just, uh, the timing didn't work out to bring it up to.
Okay, alright.
Question here, uh, in, under building, uh, the residential square foot, what does that figure of 100,005,58 represent?
Square foot. All the square footage that we've, uh, been able to build in residential.
Very exciting. Good visuals. This is sometimes easier to digest at a glance than a report on a line, 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 thing. So thank you, that's great.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry we missed the comments and questions of Mr. McDonald, but, uh, any other, anything else? Looks good. Trina, you gonna add anything here? Alright, okay. Thank you very much, very impressive, uh, yeah.
You know, you can always come to us, too, if you have any, well, Mr. McDaniel, we're here for you. Thank you.
Alright, let's look at the quarterly community improvement project report.
There we go. There it is, and the big version.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm just briefly going to go through, uh, a few of these, uh, highlighted projects. Not everyone, by any means, certainly will open up to any questions you have. First of all, uh, we'll talk about this a little bit more in our street, uh, update later, uh, this evening, but I did want to highlight, uh, number one and two, the slurry seal projects. We were able to, uh, squeeze those in towards the tail end of the paving season before it got too cold here just recently, uh, and were able to knock out the year four and the accelerated year five slurry seal project. So, uh, those crews, uh, really cranked that out about, uh, a little less than two weeks time span, uh, across the community, got a lot of good maintenance work done, uh, throughout.
Just in time.
Yeah, just in time, absolutely. So, uh, we got lucky on that one. Uh, number five, Guadalupe River Utility Crossing, as we mentioned to you last time, we had, uh, just awarded the bid on that contract as far as the design engineering work. Uh, that is underway. Uh, again, we were successful in the $1 million in state disaster recovery funds, uh, and we are, have applied now, uh, in the last six weeks for, uh, an additional half million that, uh, that project is eligible for, uh, for state disaster recovery fund. So we're hopeful that, uh, in total, will be, uh, eligible and be awarded a 1.5 from the state towards that project. Uh, number seven, River Trail Extension to Shriner University. Happy to, uh, let you guys know that we have, uh, mobilized, uh, our construction contract out there. They've done quite a bit of the clearing work, actually, along that trailway. Uh, probably about 75, 80% done at this point. Uh, also, a lot of work going on at Shriner University itself. Uh, as you recall, that's a partnership with them, and they did have some components, not only, uh, in relation to helping fund that project, uh, which was also partially E I C funded, but also, uh, improvements that they're doing on their campus. They've done quite a bit of their perimeter trail work, uh, if you haven't seen that recently. Absolutely.
I had no idea.
As well as the trailhead itself, uh, they are working on, uh, they've got a construction.
Is their trail going to be a crushed granite trail?
Yes, sir, the, the, uh, perimeter trail will be crushed granite.
Ours is concrete.
The city trail will be concrete, yes, sir.
And that's going to be complete mid-year?
Our hope, uh, we're, we are pushing hard. Uh, our hope is that that will be complete around the April timeframe. So we're, we're both entities are working really hard to make that happen. We'll just have to see how the weather goes, uh, this winter. Hopefully, it'll cooperate with us.
Get back one, just real quick, the, uh, tennis center, are we still on schedule?
Uh, on schedule, um, it's looking like February, March timeframe, um, so we're, they're, they're continuing to work out there. They've done most of the, uh, site work, uh, now, and so they're beginning to go vertical, and usually that has, you know, a little bit less weather dependent, so, uh, we're hopeful that they'll be able to remain on.
Went out there the other day and looked at it, but I just, I didn't know what the timeframe on it, if they were still on schedule or not.
Yes, sir, yeah, we're trying to push hard for that February timeframe, so we can, uh, we've got a couple tournaments scheduled in the March, April timeframe, so we're trying to, uh, stay on track with that. Uh, just real quickly, and more on the public work side, uh, Legion Lift Station continues to, to move forward. Uh, we are, uh, just about to, uh, initiate the testing phase, where we'll be filling that up and pushing water through there, uh, before it's fully activated. Uh, so if you want one final look, let me know, and we'll try to get you over there, uh, in the next week or so, uh, before we, we start putting other product in there, uh, that, uh, may be a little bit less palatable than, than water. Waste water, uh, the water treatment plant clarify our rehab project, uh, we are moving, uh, very close to finality on that, kind of, uh, really on punch list items. Uh, that should be pretty much fully operational, uh, in, by the December timeframe. Tied to that to some degree, at least in the same, uh, vicinity, uh, the T T H M control facility, um, again, we've got a lot of, uh, products on that one that's being manufactured off-site. Uh, it'll be a little bit of a phasing as that's coming in, in the February, March, April timeframe, but we do, uh, expect that to be fully operational sometime around April, uh, before we get into the summer, which tends to be the more heavy, uh, T T H M season, if you will.
Is that when they might retest, will they?
We test, uh, on a monthly basis.
Oh, okay.
So we'll continue to have tests that are coming through, uh, in that timeframe. It, it's, uh, we usually have, uh, testing issues, uh, during the warmer months, uh, and so we're hopeful that we'll have everything in place before we get into those summer months. Just quickly, working through, uh, the, uh, finishing touches on long-range water supply plan, as you recall, we presented a draft to you here a few months ago, uh, and then tied with that, the exploratory groundwater well, uh, in partnership, uh, with the agreement that, uh, you signed with, uh, Headwaters. Uh, we are working through the design efforts on that, wrapping that up, and hoping to have that, uh, out for bids here in the next month or so. Uh, so we've been back and forth with them, making sure it fits the scope of, of what they're looking for as well, uh, but we're hopeful we'll be able to bring you a contract, uh, in the January, February timeframe, construction contract. Uh, landfill permitting, uh, it's been a very long, uh, effort over multiple years with L N V, uh, and we were, uh, you know, it's one of these where it goes through a lengthy process with T C E Q, uh, and we were, uh, surprised and glad to finally see approval of that effort. Uh, again, not intending to do an expansion effort in the near future, but we've got that in our hip pocket if we would ever need that. Uh, again, that extends a, a 100-year, uh, permit, uh, at the existing facility.
That's great news.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I had not heard that, that's super.
Glad to bring that forward to you tonight. Uh, Hill Country Drive reconstruction, uh, we were able to open that up over this last month. Uh, we've had a few small rain events, uh, and we're, uh, pleased to see that it's been performing pretty well. Again, it won't solve every issue right there, but, uh, we'll certainly, uh, the concrete will, uh, perform much better, uh, from a, uh, standpoint of not having as many potholes, uh, but then also the drainage slope that was incorporated in that project will help, uh, the traffic movement through there, uh, in the smaller rain event, so excited to have that.
And there's later significant work to be done, right?
Absolutely, there's, uh, a secondary and tertiary phases there, uh, for the actual drainage, uh, infrastructure that goes down to the river, uh, that won't, um, in any way preclude the work that's already been done, uh, but this was a good initial step that will, that will help in the smaller rain events. Now, the, the bigger rain events, we've, we've got to help the downflow, uh, and help it get down, get, basically get more slope to get it down to the river. Uh, but those were extensively, uh, more expensive projects. Uh, and so, uh, we, first things first, we figured, let, let's get the biggest bang for our buck in, in this smaller project right there at Hill Country Drive. Again, it's concrete, and so, um, that will assist, uh, with that water that, that tends to pool there, um, and so we don't have those potholing features.
Okay.
Uh, and then, uh, last but not least, uh, not, not our project directly, but, uh, the renovations at the Accadia, our understanding is that, uh, they have, uh, received some of their initial bids from construction bids, uh, and those have come in, uh, in a positive fashion, and so, uh, they are continuing to progress that project, uh, and very aggressively, uh, to, uh, be able to be open, uh, at least in some capacity by July 3rd, uh, 2020. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
I, can I get an update on number three, the, the parking garage enhancements? I haven't heard anything about that one in a bit.
Absolutely, yeah, I actually talked with, uh, Mr. Peter Lewis, uh, our architect, uh, this morning. Uh, we are in the process of coordinating with K Pub. Uh, we're trying to get, there's utility, um, uh, utility lines, essentially the, the power lines that go down Water Street, uh, and down Clay Street, uh, we are looking at We are looking at trying to bring those underground, and that has some lighting implications. But it, it, we, we essentially, it needs to go within our, either our city property or the city right-of-way. And we have area that is not necessarily, it's landscaped, basically. And so while we're redoing this landscaping, now's the time, right, to go put it underneath if we're gonna do it. And so we're trying to evaluate the feasibility of getting that in there, which will have a, a pretty great aesthetic improvement in that corridor.
That'd be exciting. More lines we can get out of that sightline is just.
Yes, sir.
Changes the visual perspective of the downtown.
There's lots of moving parts on it, so that's why we're trying, we're taking a little bit of time to make sure when we do it, we do it right.
It'll fall into the cuts plan, though, probably will, too, though, as far as visual.
Be happy to answer any other questions you have.
Just glad to see you don't have much going on.
You had to add some more. There's a lot of completed projects on, it seems to me.
Thank you very much.
All right. We're going to recess and reconvene upstairs. City Attorney, do we need a motion at this point to go into executive session?
That's up to you, if you wanna recess and, and do the motion upstairs. I think that's what we've done in the past, but you.
All right, we'll, we'll do that. We'll recess.